Okay, we'll call this meeting to order at 6:34. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice touch presenting a flag, I like that. Okay, next up is Agenda Review. At this time, I don't have any amendments. Anyone else?
Hmm, that would be... I don't, um, I... Nope, I do not.
Okay, on to Correspondence, Visitors, and Public Comments. We do have Joe Public here. Toby McGuire is visiting us again, a longtime board member in the past. And I see Sarah's back again.
Yep, visiting again. Thanks for letting me join tonight.
Oh, no problem. Okay, oh, I see Steve's here too, so we have full board. Okay, first up is Approval of the Minutes from November 3rd. Entertainer motion. Terry's the first. Devin's the second. Don't be shy. So, any discussion? I only saw one little minor thing in the very top of it, under Board Members. Bethan Miller got listed with Board Members. And then she also got listed as other participants. I didn't see anything else.
Right, we'll fix that, of course.
Not seeing anybody else, so all those in favor approving the November 3rd minutes as revised, raise your hand. Motion carries 9-0. Uh, let's see, next up, we're going to our presentations. First up is the NVSD Local Assessment Plan.
So, we have Koshia here to give an overview of our local assessment plan and what the different kinds of assessments mean. We're gonna spend some time throughout this school year sharing what our local and state assessments are, how teachers and coaches and administrators work together to create needs assessments, and how that then drives the goals. And we'll be sharing a good deal of data throughout the year in a variety of presentations. So, Koshia, I'm going to share the slides and you're going to do the talking, correct? Okay.
Yes. So, good evening, everyone. I'm really excited to share our local assessment plan with you. And I'm so glad Sarah's here because she was on the coaches team that helped to write this plan. And without our coaches, you know, a lot of the work going on in our district would not be happening. So, I'm glad to have her representing that group.
It's just taking a while.
No problem. All right, we can go to the next slide, please. So, I really wanted to start out by talking a little bit about the purpose of our local assessment plan. And it's basically to use assessments to identify students who are making positive gains towards proficiency based on our grade level standards. It's also to identify students who are not making adequate progress and who we need to provide some kind of supplemental instruction. And then the third big purpose is really to identify where these gaps in learning are happening. Next one, please, Julie. So, this is just a visual to help you to understand the local assessment plan. We start out by providing a screening tool that is administered to all our students. And this year, we are excited that we've been able to use the STAR 360 to screen all our students from kindergarten to eighth grade with the same tool. So, all students receive the screener and then based on that screening tool, we take the students who are at the 40th percentile and below, who are considered to be at risk. And then further diagnostic tools administered for these students to specifically find out where their gaps in learning are. And then, once those students are identified, we use progress monitoring tools as they are receiving supplemental services in order to monitor whether they are making adequate gains towards proficiency. And these are in both reading and in math. Yep, perfect, thank you, Julie. So, we have now several diagnostic assessments in math and reading. And once these diagnostic assessments are administered, decisions are made with classroom teachers, coaches, specialists, interventionists, special educators. And the team makes a decision about what skills may be missing and then what kind of goal should be set for that student, what kind of intervention should be provided, and the team works together to really monitor that student's progress. Once they've reached a short-term goal that's been set by the team, they may decide to discontinue intervention or additional goals may be created for that student. So, here I present an example of how we do this in literacy. So, as I mentioned before, the STAR reading is administered to all the students. And this is an online computer-assisted technology assessment. So, all the students take this online. There are 34 questions. And based on that assessment, we then identify those students who we are concerned about. As I said, they are 40th percentile and below, or below proficiency. A diagnostic assessment that is being used in kindergarten through sixth grade is the Fanta-Sentinell Benchmark Reading. So, this is a one-on-one. It's individually administered assessment. It's a diagnostic tool that gives a lot of information to teachers about reading fluency, about comprehension, the strategies a student may be using, as well as where they are in terms of grade level expectations. Once that assessment is administered, the team, like I said, makes a plan for that student and then some kind of supplemental intervention is started. So, based on that data, there's a lot of analysis that can be done in terms of the errors they make while reading, when they answer comprehension questions, what are the different levels of comprehension? Is it just literal comprehension? Is it deeper comprehension? Where are the errors that the student is making? So, these diagnostic assessments in reading really help us to determine what next steps are necessary for that student in order to move up to grade level expectations. Next. In math, it's similar. We administer the STAR math, and that was given to all students. And then, based on that 40th percentile cutoff, the diagnostic tools, for example, the one over here, this is a fall screener that was created by our math coaches along with our consultant, Christian Gottman. And this is again, once it goes from the computer adaptive test, this is administered one-on-one. So, it's more like an interview. And the teacher and the student are sitting, the teachers with the student, and really trying to figure out where those misconceptions might be or what kind of strategies the student is using. And they would then make a determination of what kind of intervention would be effective in order to move that student up the learning progression. And again, these students who have been identified, they're constantly monitored to make sure they're making adequate progress. If they aren't, then the team might meet again to say, "You know, this intervention isn't working. Maybe we need to tweak it, or maybe we need to use some different kind of instruction." So, there's constant monitoring of these students who are at risk. Next one, Julie. Thank you. So, once the assessments have been administered, the decision is really now, what do we do with this data? Do we continue, you know, if a student is between the 40th and 50th percentile, they're not exactly at proficiency, but the teacher might say, "You know, based on classroom assessments or based on other formative assessments I'm doing in the classroom, I'm not really worried about this student. So, we're going to just let them continue in the classroom receiving the instruction that all other students are receiving and just keep a watch on them to make sure that they are catching up." Or they might decide we need to do some additional diagnostic. They might decide that the student needs some kind of classroom support. Or they might decide, you know, we want to have this student pulled out into a small group to receive very specialized instruction. So, these kind of decisions are being made constantly to make sure that the students that are receiving any kind of supplemental services are making those adequate gains. Next one, please, Julie. Our interventions are provided by content specialists. We have interventionists who are specialized and have received a lot of training in just literacy. We also have interventionists who have done a lot of training in math, and so they are highly specialized in those content areas. They plan instruction and monitor student progress. They are constantly in communication with parents to make sure that there is a strong parent and a school partnership because we want to make sure that those students, as well as their families, understand what supplemental services are being provided as well as the progress that the student is making. So, those partnerships are really, really critical in terms of monitoring and helping students to make the gains that we want. And again, these specialists work very closely with our classroom teachers and with our math and literacy coaches. So, there are lots of eyes on these students and everybody's working together to make sure they are making gains. Next one. During the year, we'll be progress monitoring all our students, not just the students receiving intervention. So, the STAR 360, which consists of a reading as well as a math assessment, will be administered to all our students from kindergarten to eighth grade three times during the year. We finished our fall administration. There'll be another one in winter and then a final one in spring. And this allows us at the beginning of the year to screen the students, group the students according to learning targets, as well as helps us to monitor growth. So, by the end of the year in springtime, we'll be able to measure how each student has grown over the year in reading and math. It also helps us to design our classroom instruction. So, if the teacher is seeing that her group of students, his or her group of students, has certain skills or certain standards that they haven't quite mastered and gained proficiency, and they can modify the classroom instruction to adequately support that growth in the whole class. And then again, they look further into small groups and see what those small groups need and then design their instruction accordingly. This year, we are really excited with having this screener and this progress monitoring tool for all our students because we really want to continuously monitor improvement. And having this assessment, which is really quick and easy to administer, it takes about 20, 25 minutes, the teacher is able to get a really good bird's eye view of what's going on in the classroom and make real actionable instructional goals and steps for their students. We can again, progress monitor, we can measure growth, we can even see what standards have been mastered by the group or by smaller groups of students, as well as we can identify focus skills that a small group or a group of kids may need and then monitor their progress on those focus skills. So, what has been completed so far? All our students from kindergarten to eighth grade have been assessed on STAR 360. Right now, preliminary data is being reviewed at all the schools. Each of our, all of our coaches have been really digging deep into this and will be reviewing it with teachers at staff meetings during PLCs and really digging into that data to see what might be next steps in terms of instruction, as well as which students would need urgent intervention, which students can wait a little longer to receive intervention. All those decisions are being made. Some students have already been identified, some are being identified. And then, teachers will be receiving additional training actually tomorrow on how do you interpret and use the STAR data reports? Because there are many, many kinds of reports that can be generated from this data. And so, they'll be getting more training on how do you generate these reports? How do you interpret them? How do you use that data? And so, of course, we always have challenges. Our biggest challenge in administering assessments is teacher turnover. Every year, you know, we have new teachers. And so, we have to make sure we train those teachers in what our veteran teachers have already been trained in. So, that remains a big challenge to, you know, when you have new teachers and they're just trying to learn how to teach and we've got all these different assessments and other things in place, we want to make sure that we train them and yet not overwhelm them with too much. And so, our coaches play an integral role in supporting our new teachers, helping them learn, you know, how to navigate these assessments, how to look at data, how to, you know, interpret the data, how to plan instruction. And then, another challenge that still remains is meeting the needs of our students who are on individualized educational plans. We know with the school closure, it has been especially difficult to help those students to meet their IEP goals, so that remains a challenge. But again, we are working together very closely with our teachers, special ed teachers, to make sure that they are also receiving this kind of training. We are going to have a special training just for special educators and interventionists on December 11th. So, they are going to learn how to use, there is within STAR 360, there are customized assessments that you can create for small groups of students. So, they're going to get some more training on that. But, every year's a challenge. There's new challenges. This year, there are even more challenges. But we are confident that with this quick and reliable assessment, we will be able to start closing that achievement gap. So, we are constantly learning new things and we are learning how to become more efficient in not just administering reliable assessments, but also how to use them in a very effective, actionable way. So, one of the biggest advantages of changing to this assessment at the beginning of the year has been the time we've been able to save. Because until this year, Highgate had actually piloted this assessment a couple years ago. And so, we were lucky that they had had some experience with it. But all the other schools were administering one-on-one assessments at the beginning of the year, which took weeks and weeks to administer. And this year was especially challenging, starting off in the hybrid model. So, we are really, really happy that we were able to administer this assessment quickly and already have preliminary data that we can work on, especially given the fact that we didn't have a chance to administer SPAC in May. And so, that summative data was missing. So, we didn't have any data on a student since March of this year. So, us, our coaches have done a phenomenal job of collecting the data and starting to look at it and really start thinking about what would be next steps for their school, for their teachers, and for the students. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Devin.
Thanks for sharing this with us, Koshia. This tool looks, I mean, it's very exciting. You know, and like any tool, it really does come down to the training and the usage of it. You know, so I hope that our teachers are in the tool a lot and know how to use the reports to access the data, to, you know, make actionable decisions. We'll talk about it later in our Goals update. We're looking for some, you know, concrete, you know, metrics to help us evaluate some of those goals. And I think this would be a key, key way to do that.
Sure.
So, yeah, thank you. This is great.
You're welcome.
Joanne.
I'm gonna piggyback off what Devin said. Yes, thank you. This is, this is really neat. I just, I have two questions and I'm not sure. I know the first one you'll definitely be able to answer. I'm not sure about the second one. My first time is just roughly how long were, you know, like how many hours a day did the students have to dedicate to taking these tests? You know, the reading and the math?
The exciting thing about this, Joanne, is it takes 20 to 25 minutes for each of them. And it's because it's computer adaptive technology. With every question that's answered by the student, the computer adjusts the level of difficulty. And because of that technology available, within 34 questions, the computer analyzes the pattern of answers. So, it's not based on how the student is answering each question. It's analyzing the whole pattern. And based on that pattern, they're able to give you with high predictability how the student is doing on our state standards. So, that was the exciting part about it, as our teachers, even in the hybrid model, they started administering it to small groups of kids. And they needed 20 to 25 minutes for reading and 20 to 25 minutes for math. So, in a short span of time, we were able to complete the assessments for kindergarten through sixth grade in our elementary schools and then seventh and eighth grade at MBU.
Excellent. And I, I think I have the answer to the second question. And that's just the reaction of the students. And I'm just, I'm gonna go back in my day when it was the number two pencil and the little, you know, bubbles that you had to fill in. And it was four days, I think, during the week that we had to focus on this. Like, the reaction of the kids, did they even realize they were taking a test? Did they even realize they were doing an assessment? I guess it's...
Well, one of the things I've heard from the Highgate teachers, because they've been using this for a couple of years, is once the kids see the results, right? The teacher's telling them, "This is what this is showing us about you", they get really excited and they get motivated, right? And so, when they take it again in winter and in spring, they wanna know what progress they've made. So, from what I've heard from the experienced teachers is that the kids are really excited to be able to see their own growth. This tool also generates individual graphs. So, you can create like individual goals for students and you can show them how they grew from fall to winter to spring. And so, for us, all our students, it's highly motivating because even if a student at the beginning of the year is not meeting proficiency, this tool shows them growing. So, it's really, and because it's visual, I think it makes a big difference to the students to be able to see that. Yasha put something into the chat box. Yasha, do you wanna elaborate on that?
Yeah, I was just commenting, you know, we actually put a couple of our slide shows of what the data looked like. And it's really just incredible that the information it provides us so the coaches could have a really clear, like, as a school, this is the direction we need to go in literacy and in math. Like, and in particular, we learned multiplication. It's something Highgate really needs to work on. And so, that was very clear from the data. And then, when I walk around classrooms, I see these little skill and drill with multiplication in almost every classroom. So, you can tell our math coach has really made sure. She said, "All right, whenever there's extra time in math menu, throw in multiplication", because we realized that's an area of growth. So, yeah, I mean, I was amazed by the presentations that they made for our central office meeting.
And I know Joyce was meeting with her staff today to go over their data. So, Joyce, do you wanna share any insights?
I'm just really excited that we have, it's been a while since we've had a good math assessment tool to show progress. You know, we've been using our math performance test and we had the other math screener, but I'm really excited to have this now. We, actually, we're doing that more tomorrow, Koshia, tomorrow's faculty meeting. But we have started looking at the data in PLCs. And, you know, not just looking at individual students, individual student strengths and needs, but looking at class-wise and then really looking at instruction and then looking school-wide. Are there certain things school-wide? It's, you know, it's just a way of life, looking at this data all the time. And that's the way it should be. And being able to look and see what it is we need to do and what are the next steps to move kids forward. So, I think it's another really good tool for us to use.
Yeah, and I know at Pan Am also the coaches have done their preliminary analysis and they're going to go over that data with their staff too. Terry, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. I actually had, one question was, just to make sure I understand it. So, everybody takes the STAR's test. And then, if you're proficient, you don't have anything else. But if you're not proficient, then you do the diagnostic tests. Is that right? So, I guess, I'm wondering if we have some kind of future goal for what we're gonna do for the people who have met the expectations or above it?
That's a really good question. Actually, we do have diagnostic tests for the kids who are already proficient also. Like, for, for the students who are proficient on the Fanta-Sentinell, we administer the complete comprehension. So, it is identifying within comprehension what the student is really strong at and then pushing them further. So, we want to make sure that we keep those students at the upper end challenged as much as we are providing support to the students who are struggling. And in, one of the things I've talked to the coaches about even in math is that what do we do for kids who are already proficient? And what, how do we keep them challenged? So, you know, we've been talking about creating enrichment groups and math menus designed in such a way that you can have a small group that's already proficient being challenged and pushed a little further beyond, you know, where the rest of the students are. So, that was a great question because I firmly believe that kids at all levels should be challenged and should be engaged. So, those are conversations we have all the time of how do we challenge those kids who are already proficient?
That's great. And I'm, you know, here I am asking, I think it's great what you're doing and you've got, you know, let's start with the kids that aren't making it and then let's get to the others when we can. The other thing, I wonder if this is, but we have the testing for math and we have it for literacy. What about science? Is that something down the road? What about science? Is that something down the road that we'll be looking at too? I, I'm putting a lot on you with everything else you guys have on you, so I'm not. Asking for it tomorrow or this year or anything. I'm just thinking this is such a great way, we're going a great direction. I'm hoping that sometime we could include science into it as well.
Yeah, one of the things we just found out from the state is, you know, they've been uh, administering the science assessment. And we weren't getting that data until fall, so it didn't really help us. But they just announced that if there is a science assessment this spring, we will get immediate results. Um, so if it happens this spring, that's great, otherwise maybe the following spring. They also said they are going to be releasing some practice items, which was one of the things that. Uh, I had gone with a team of uh, science teachers to a training by the Agency of Ed. A few months, uh, it was last December. And we were specifically asking, can you give us some practice items? So that we can create um, our own like local assessments based on those science uh, tests. So yes, that's um, on the horizon. We, uh, most of the companies are not that advanced yet. In creating science assessments, um, that can be used as easily as uh, literacy and uh, math. But it is something that's definitely, uh, I know that the science folks at the Agency of Ed are concerned about. And uh, I've had several conversations with Jim Daly at MBU. Um, he really wants to use those practice items to create. Local assessments so that we can be administering those. And um, you know, figuring out where our strengths and our weaknesses are and then um, you know. Providing instruction based on that. So we've talked a lot in the science curriculum team over the last year about. How do we create these local science assessments? And um, you know. As much as we want to have these scientifically evidence-based assessments. Teachers are not uh, trained in creating these assessments, right? So we do the very, very best we can. Uh, but the goal is that ultimately we. Are able to either find an existing science assessment that we can use or um, develop something.
That's great, that's great that you're gonna get the data back soon when it actually can be used. That's great.
Yeah.
Instead of just judging. Thank you.
Don. You're muted, Don.
Did, did Toby get ahead of me? Toby, did you have a question? Okay, uh, so Fasha, you uh, you mentioned uh. Uh, highly trained uh, coaches. What do we do as a district to make certain they stay on the cutting edge? Because as you know, things change quickly. And uh, this is a good example of something that's very positive that we're doing, but. Wha- what do we do other than just hire them and say, now you're a coach, you were a teacher, now you're a coach?
Let Sarah answer that. I think. One of the things we do is we provide a lot of professional development. But I would love Sarah to share some of the trainings that she's been doing over the past couple of years.
Uh, sure. Um, so as Koshia said, there um, are numerous uh, professional development opportunities that. Um, most of the coaching staff, um, the literacy and math go to together. Um, and then we're able to take that information back to our teachers. Um, and kind of figure out uh, how we're gonna disseminate that information and then continue it. Um, I think a lot of the research has shown that. The uh, one-and-done PD sessions are not as effective as we would like. Um, and so by sending the coaches um, along with teachers or on our own, we're then able to bring that information back and continue the conversation of. You know, what is the strategy? What is the skill? What is this tool? Um, and continue to be able to move that forward in ways that, you know, maybe. One, you know, day, eight-hour session uh, with a specialist might not get us in that same way.
Thanks, Sarah. But Don, that was a good question. One of the things we've done is our math coaches. Uh, this is year two, they've been working with. A consultant who just works with the coaches to help them. To really learn to build capacity of uh, their staff. So we put that in place and this year we have two brand-new math coaches at the elementary level. So we hired Joan Lumbras, uh, who was a phenomenal math coach in. Um, Swanton who retired. She is mentoring the two brand-new math coaches. So we uh, put that into place, knowing that they were going to be brand-new. And so uh, Joan is working with them. She meets the two of them on a monthly basis. She's available by email. And she's supporting that way. We have Christian Cottoman, who is a regional uh, trainer. Who is working with our math coaches. And then um, we are just about to enter into a contract with uh, Partnerships for Literacy and Learning, which is again a regional organization. In Vermont, which is gonna start working with our uh, literacy coaches at the elementary level. The good news is they've already been working with Sarah at. MBU and so they're going to be able to provide that vertical alignment in terms of. Uh, what is happening in literacy. So yes, lots of professional development.
Right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Koshia. That was a lot of information, very good information too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm not seeing any questions or comments, so at this point we'll move on to the elementary administration updates.
Who do you wanna start with?
Oh, I don't remember who I started with last time. I think it was Highgate's. Let's do Franklin this time.
I can go, but I don't think Dina's had a turn first yet, but I can go. But she's like, no, no. Well, I'll just say it is great to have everyone back. Um, that is just been amazing. Teachers have been so happy to not do hybrid and in-person planning. And not just parents and, and kids being really happy, the teachers really happy, but. Um, I actually got several emails from parents when we heard the sixth grade was coming back, because, you know, we weren't sure what was gonna happen with that. And it was so cool, because one parent emailed me and said that. Her son's face, when he found out that he was coming back to school full-time. Was the same excitement that he has on his face on Christmas morning. And I just, I just, I, I just thought that is incredible. And it was somebody who. You know, was doing really well with the remote learning, but he just really wanted to be back in school full-time. Um, and then one day, we uh, every day we have kids come down and lead us in the pledge. And we always ask them, tell us what kind of a day we should have, and we announce that. And so they say, you know, a terrific day or tremendous day or snowy day, whatever. But one day, the, the students that had gotten back said. A great to be back in the lobby day. And I said, what? And all this year, they've been going in their outside doors and never coming down the hall into the lobby. And he was happy to be back in the lobby and see the decorations in the lobby. And it just made me think about, you know, for kids, just getting some things, you know, a little more back to normal. So it's just great. And yes, it's an adjustment and yes, some things are harder. You know, recess and lunches and moving around the rooms, but as a teacher said, it, it is an adjustment, but it's just so great to have them back. Um. It, it really, we continue to focus on trying to do everything we've always done, but just do it COVID-compliant, I call it. So like, we finally had our summer reading program recognition. I did it twelve times. Outside, so that we could recognize kids in each class. Um, we still had our red ribbon week and the fire department still came and did presentations and. And it's, it's just so much more work for everybody, um, but it's important to still do those things. Um, the fire department had to rethink what they do because. They couldn't let the kid try on the gear. They couldn't, you know, let him try on the. You know, try out some of the equipment. And so we did it outside and, you know, they had to come up with new things and, and they. Still did some of the same things with the fire extinguisher and what do you do in case of a fire and all of that. Um, but they shot off the death gun on top of the tank, the truck and, and it made rainbows. It was a seventy-degree day and. You know, it, it was just wonderful. And um, you know, I always think every cloud has a silver lining and. And kids got to see something different. And I don't know why, but after all these years, they finally let me sit in the driver's seat of the truck and I got to use the air horn and blow the sirens, so. I thought it was the best presentation ever. But the, the point really is that when I have to plan those things and it's so much harder and I'm just doing it occasionally. It reminds me that every single day, teachers are having to rethink. Every single activity they're doing in the classroom and how to do it in a safe way. And I just continue to be amazed and in awe of everything they're accomplishing. And they are accomplishing a lot. And. Um, they were able to share a, a good deal of that at parent conferences um, this past week. Um, I said in my report, we had a hundred percent of our parents scheduled for parent conferences, well, they all attended. And I was really happy about that, because I'm used to most or all of our parents coming to conferences. But I was really worried with it being virtual, um, what the attendance would be like. And so we took some extra precautions and every teacher had next to them. The parents' um, email, cell phone number, work phone number, home phone number. So if somebody wasn't right there, ready for the meeting, um, the teachers contacted them. And so um, all of our parents came to those conferences and. And I just wanna go back to something Koshia was saying about the close connection with interventionists and families in addition to the classroom teachers, because. Um, our interventionists also had twenty-something conferences themselves with parents, so. Parents not only had a conference for each of their kids, but some of them had an additional conference um, with Heather and Bree. And they've been doing that for years. One thing they added this year though, um, not only all the information about. Specifics about what they're working with kids on and what parents can do at home to support that learning, but this year they asked. Just in case we have to go fully remote again, is that this a good time, what's the good time in day that I'm getting in touch with your child? Um, to support them, so that if all of a sudden we had to go fully remote, they would be ready day one with their schedule to help kids. And so we wanted to make sure we, we had that. Um, I hope you have a chance to read um, the newsletter from the homestead and the carriage house. Um, I thought that was a really nice thank you to our kids and to Elsa Rude. I thought that was really heartwarming, um, how much that meant to them. From the card creations and pen pals class. Um. I guess I, I just wanna say that, what I said in an email to the teachers the other night after conferences. Um, there's so much to worry about and to think about with everything that's going on. But I think there's a lot to celebrate in our little corner of the world. And um. I think we need to continue to do that. And I think parent conference was a great opportunity to do that. And um, just really happy that everybody's back and um. And I'm glad the governor keeps saying that that is a priority to keep schools open, because. That's what I hope we continue to do. So. That's it for Franklin.
Thank you, Joyce. Uh, next up, Swan.
Um, we just finished parent conferences last week as well. And we had um, approximately eighty percent of our parents participating, which was better than we thought, because open house. Numbers were very low. Um. At this point, we do have all of our students back, except grade six. We're still. Waiting to find out if we need another classroom or not, so um. Julie was great about extending that time. Um, we're still waiting for answers to see how that will play out. Um. We have a brand-new first-grade classroom and Mel Bertham, um, as you may remember. Left the library, so we don't have a librarian this year. And Mel graciously accepted that position and is doing a really good job. Um, we just had some new registrations of kids, so we are at um, nineteen in most of our classrooms, which Jason tells us is. The MAC, so we're working on, on, on those setups. Our facilities crew has been amazing, um, and built the eighty desks that were in. The um, the report that I shared, we're still waiting for desks to come. Um, if they don't get here, he's gonna start building some more for grade six. Um, the gyms are almost empty. Um, so that's a really good thing, especially with the cold weather coming. Our two PE teachers can now be inside. Um, we did finish our assessments as well and our coaches are working really hard. Our interventionists, thank goodness we have them this year, because they're subbing for us a lot. Um, we had assigned an interventionist to each grade level. And so they're working really, really closely with the team. And anytime a teacher is out, they're able to step in, um, because there are no subs this year, so that's, that's been good for us. We're still working on getting our intervention program up and running and, and what that will look like. The coaches also, we finally, I think, came to a, um, a consensus of a remote learning plan if we should need it. Um, that's been weighing very heavy on our minds, since we should have been working on that since this summer, but thank God. We haven't had to use it yet. Um, and uh, our nurses stepped up beautifully today. We had the um, testing, as I'm sure Julie will talk about. Danielle Loizel and Wendy Culligan were amazing and the staff was incredible. Um, so we got that done, Julie delivered. Thanks to MBU for helping to um, sort everything. And our teachers are doing well. Um, we have a lot of young teachers right now. Um. And I think people are just trying to support each other. It's sad. I talked to a couple of them today that. Probably for the first time in their lives, won't be able to go home for Thanksgiving. And for some of them, that's really tough, so. I think as a staff, we're really just, you know, wrapping around everyone. The kids being back has been phenomenal. Um, I think they're happy there. I think they're feeling safe and content and. You know, a- as somebody mentioned, I think Joyce, um, our teachers are tired because nothing is muscle memory. Every decision that they make and every adjustment in their plans. You know, to fit with, with COVID. I mean, even talking to a kid, I had one teacher today saying. My back hurts so much, because I'm just bending over all the time, trying to stay apart, so. I, we have to commend our staff, because they are just working very, very hard, so. So that's it with Swanton.
Great, I'm, so I'm gonna guess that means it's me now. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Oh, sorry, I forgot I had my mic off. Sorry about that.
It's all right. Um, I'm gonna, I always preface, I have three young little ones and one of them is a, a baby who likes to scream, so you might hear some noises in the background, which you might think is adorable. Uh, so I think Highgate's in a very similar boat. Things have been very good, but it's very stressful and everything. You know, when you kinda make decisions, you have a lot of other things to think about. And it is fantastic that we have grade six back in the building. Uh, I, huge shout-out to the custodians, because to make that work, they had to empty the library, empty the cafeteria. They had to move all the stuff that was in storage in the art room to go onto the stage. So that way the art room could be a place for staff to have prep and lunches, so. Although sure, the decision was easy to say, oh yeah, sixth grade's coming back, it was a lot of work. Logistically, to officially get them there, but. Uh, the classrooms have moved from the white building into the library and the cafeteria. Uh, which was a lot of work for the Paris also helped and the classroom teachers, but. They really made the spaces feel like a classroom. You know, even by blocking off certain areas, moving posters from the white building to, to the other buildings, so that way. It still felt like their classroom. I think for both of the teachers, it was really important that the students didn't feel a huge change. So they really wanted the rooms to look similar. And so that was dedication for them, because that was, you know, the extra stuff they didn't have to do. But they felt they really wanted to do for kids, so that was really great. It's definitely been nice having sixth grade back. They really enjoy being back in person. I think they struggled with the hybrid model. I think a lot of kids had a hard time with the constant transitions. So they felt really good and, and kinda like Joyce, I actually had a few parents who reached out and said, thank you for making that work. Uh, so that was really nice. We are in the middle of Spirit Week, which is super exciting. We had uh, Jersey Day today and yesterday was Pyjama Day. And people seem to be enjoying that. I posted some stuff on Facebook and families seem to be enjoying looking at the photos. Uh, we are certainly thinking, like Dina had mentioned, uh, going fully remote is definitely weighing a little heavily on us. Coaches have worked very hard to come up with what a remote plan would look like. I think we have a really solid template. We know what we're gonna do and we actually, tomorrow with our staff, we are gonna provide some trainings. Just to kinda the basics, what will you need? What will you need to know before we go hybrid and really understand what our model is going to look like? That way, teachers feel a little more prepared because they definitely have expressed a lot of concern about going remote and what that would look like. And we've done a lot of reassurance that we've we've done this before. We learned from it. It might be really hard, but we can do it again. And I think that's just about everything that I wanted to mention that wasn't already in the board report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for any of the schools? Don? Don, you're muted.
I was unmuted, and I muted me, I guess. Okay, it's been mentioned multiple times tonight about new teachers. I'm just curious if each, if Dina and Joseph and Joyce, how many new teachers do each of you have this year?
We have.
Go ahead, Dina.
Go ahead. You go first. I'm still counting.
Okay, I have three new classroom teachers and a new interventionist. That's the professional staff.
Thank you.
We have seven.
I don't have any brand new teachers this year.
Thank you. Seven's a lot.
It is. The hard thing with the seven, Don, too, is four of them are in one grade level. So grade three is for a new special educator, three brand new teachers, and a veteran teacher. So that team, we've done a lot of wraparound with.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say, if you have a minute, I was taking a look at Dina's link to the Veterans Day video that was put together. And it was really beautiful. So make sure you take a look at that.
It said Chris has left the meeting.
Well, okay, then.
I was wondering why no one was calling on Jen. Oops, sorry. No one was calling on Jen, Jen embraced.
Jen, ask your question.
Well, I can't tell because I know it's kind of dark in the background. My apologies for that. But it's not so much a question as it is a comment. When I read earlier this morning through all the reports from the elementaries, and I just wanted to say I love the desks that Jason did. Eight, the sixth graders, wow. A lot of hard work went into that. I appreciate it, and I know parents appreciate it. Everything that you guys have done to get those sixth graders back in and start coming in. So I just wanted to say a little something like, say that, and love the desks.
I have to, Laura and I were were talking to Jason last night. A lot of schools were thrown by the change in guidance this fall. They had planned on having 22, 23 kids in a classroom with Plexiglas. And then we were told we couldn't have Plexiglas. Now, Swanton didn't have a reliance on Plexiglas in their plan. But some schools did. So there are schools out there, big schools, waiting on desks like we are. And they have kids sitting on the floor with taped squares where their bodies can be with clipboards. And that's that's it. That's where they are. So we're just so lucky to have someone like Jason who said, you know, "I see a problem. I'm going to go ahead and figure out a solution." And so Laura and I both shared the picture of the desks with some people to say, "Look at this beautiful thing that was done." Yeah, it is really lucky.
Very inexpensive, I'll add.
Yeah. And it was just, he, you know, he, you guys work with him, but we, Justina and I, just trust him so much. And the fact that he knew those desks weren't coming, like, he didn't tell us that he was even doing this. So we went and built one desk and brought it into the office. And I literally cried because that's just how much he cared about, I think, us as administrators, but more importantly, the kids. And it just, you know, it makes you feel good like that because he goes above and beyond all the time. But it was like, who would have thought of building a desk, you know?
Yeah. Welcome back, Chris.
Yeah, uh, don't know what happened. My internet dumped me off. Okay, uh, I'm guessing we're on to new business as I lost a step here. So I see some head nods. So on to new business. First up is the tractor sales agreement to the town of Franklin. We would need a motion to allow the board chair or vice chair to sign the sales agreement. Don's the first. Steve's the second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Oops, Devin.
Could we just have a little bit of background on this? Just for those who may want to see it in minutes or watch the video?
Sure. The town of Franklin and I believe the town, the Franklin School owned the tractors, but they had a deal with the town of Franklin that they could use the tractor for sidewalks for snow plowing. We also used it for our snow plowing and whatnot. The tractor's a 2008, if I remember rightly. And we barely got through last winter with it. There was a lot of concern that we'd be able to get through this winter with it also. So we we just agreed upon, actually, that's next up. We have to agree on the tractor lease for the new tractor that Franklin purchased. And so now we have this tractor that we don't need anymore. The town of Franklin would like to still use it. So we have agreed to sell it to them for a dollar.
We've been sharing, sharing the maintenance between the two entities for a while. So it just really makes sense to support the town.
Chris, at the first big snowstorm, I'd like to see Peter Bagdad give us a demonstration on how that it's operating.
Okay. All those in favor of allowing the board chair or vice chair to sign the sales agreement? Regine? Motion carries nine zero. So next up under new business is the tractor lease agreement. As I just said, Franklin bought a new tractor. And Laura has some, or has brought forth a recommendation for a lease from, I think it's Gorham Bank. She has the details, so I'll let her say what the details are.
Sure. The recommendation would be to engage in a three-year fixed rate lease at 1.82% with Gorham leasing. There is a $1 payout at the end of that lease, but they never actually make us pay that. The annual payment would be $7,917.97. I did solicit rates from Vermont Municipal Leasing as well, who actually goes out and solicits rates all over New England, actually, probably nationally now. And their rates were much higher. I tried to negotiate with them because we do business with them quite often. They started at over 6% with their lease and then only came down to 5.9. So obviously, something was wrong there. I'm not sure exactly what, and I'm investigating that. But 1.82 is much better.
So I would entertain a motion to accept Laura's recommendation of using Gorham leasing.
And to have you sign the document.
And to have the board chair or vice chair sign the document. Terry's the first. Megan's the second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of allowing the board chair or vice chair to sign the lease with Gorham leasing? Regine? Motion carries nine zero.
Chris, a question for Laura.
Sure.
I think at one point, we talked about if good times should arrive. I'm not sure what, can we, we pay that off at the end of the first year?
We can.
All right. As I say, I'm not being optimistic, but it's always know if it's an option. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, we're working hard to make sure we have a strong carryover to get us through, you know, the next couple of years. We're always working hard on that. So we'll, we'll have to see how things, managing through COVID is quite the experience. But the kind of thing that we will look at at the end of the year, for sure. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is old business. And first thing on that, or the major thing on that, is the FY '22 budget draft.
So there is a note page, and there's actually two versions of the draft to budget for you in the Dropbox. There is one that includes notes and one that does not. I would encourage you, for tonight's purposes, to reference the one without notes. The format is actually much more enjoyable. The one with notes just doesn't fit on a legal-sized piece of paper, and I didn't really want to go to ledger. So, but there are notes there. Based on prior feedback, it includes FTE information and just some general information about what's in that line, you know, what administration is included where, what would be partially grant funded, those types of things. So it would give you quite a bit of information. But if anybody has any questions on that, feel free to email me or call.
Can you bring that up on the screen? Can you bring that on the screen, or would you rather not?
I can try, Don. It's such a large file. I definitely can try. You may or may not be able to see it.
Never mind.
Well, I was just thinking about Toby has no way of knowing what we're talking about.
I'm happy to bring it up. The print will be small, but that's, we can do our best.
I think Toby just put in the chat that he's good. So if it's better not to, you don't have to.
So, yeah, it's probably very difficult for you guys to see this. There's so many columns and rows. But.
Laura, what are the highlights that people can expect to see when they're looking at the draft version?
And those will be outlined primarily in the notes section. Julie and I met with all the building principals and had some discussions around proposals and changes to staffing. I think we may speak to those later, possibly in executive session, because some of those are very sensitive. We also reviewed all the contracts. So any purchase services that the district engages in, whether they're gen ed or special ed, including tuition, and the transportation that's associated with that, we've reviewed those. I will say that currently, those costs are significantly down throughout our buildings. We did include, and we historically have have tried to do this when we can, and given the COVID situation and the uncertainty there with student needs after this is all over or going into next year, we did include some additional contracts that potentially were not filled this year, but we know there will be some need somewhere in one of our buildings next year and trying to give ourselves the room there. So that would be included. That's all throughout the budget, as I said, throughout special ed and gen ed, including transportation. We also, you know, for the most part, this business office has spent, I can't even tell you the number of hours, and I continue to say this, just reviewing and trying to properly apply the new chart of accounts. So there's been tons of movement from your first draft even to this second draft, trying to gain consistency, review historical spending, which is, to be honest, somewhat of a joke right now since we had two years of not consistent, kind of upsetting spending. But we're getting there, and we're working hard at it. So some of the changes that you'll see or lines that may be zeroed out in this version, we've tried to make notes. But if you have questions, let me know. Terry?
You know, a wise member of our community asked me that, what about the public when we're putting together the budget? You know, we have the process where you get input from the principals, you get input from, you know, those, you know, the buildings, all that kind of stuff. But do we get input from the public, or is it us that's supposed to get that? You know, we always think the public just wants us to to cut back on everything and save money. But I wonder, I think sometimes they want us to invest as well. And I'm just, is that something, we're supposed to be the conduit for that information? Or how do we find that out instead of finding out when they all show? You know, since we don't have town meeting now to approve the budget and stuff. And even then, it was last minute. So how are we going to be able to do that this year? Or is it up to us, as I said?
I wonder that one of the goals of the board that doesn't, isn't necessarily one that we've discussed in the goal meetings, but is around the communication between the board and the community around around the budget. So that it's not just, here's our budget. Obviously, you know, we have administrators that know how many teachers they need to run the courses that they have in their schools. So, I mean, there's pieces like that. But and and our hope is that when we do our formal portrait of a graduate process, we're going to be getting input from community members about what our vision is and what's important for our students. But, you know, things like having virtual, because you can't do it in person, virtual coffee hours with a board member, right? To maybe find out what's the burning, what are issues that your, what are your concerns? What are the things you're excited about in your school? Those kinds of things might be something we can talk about as ways to gather that input.
Yeah, I think you're really right. And the more I think about it, I thought, you know, one of our board goals is talking about the budget, right? But I am guilty of thinking and talking about the budget in terms of trying to persuade or influence people to approve it. I am, you know, thinking back on it, I think it'd make much more sense, like you said, if we have avenues as as board members, some kind of plan beforehand to reach out to see what people are thinking and to have a pulse on it, not just informally, but formal vehicle to get that. Because we should be getting that like now, right? As we're putting this together as opposed to January, because by then, it's going to be too late. I think it's in the.
And I think, again, we're not necessarily going to have, you know, the community come and say, "I really think you need more teachers, fewer teachers, more of this, less of that." Because that's the role of the principal in the admit, we know what we need to run our schools. But things like are buildings that are in good condition important to you? Are having, you know, good interventions in place and support for kids who struggle or opportunities for kids to excel, are they important to you? That kind of information helps the board have a better idea of the priorities of the community, helps the administration have, you know, it's never helpful. I've been to town meetings in other places where, you know, people will say, "Well, why do you have that behavior person?" Or why do you have, you know, that's, you know, that's not really an avenue for that. But if you're caring about the culture and climate of your building, then the administration will put together a plan that supports that. So good things.
Yeah, it really does make a lot of sense, especially we, you know, getting their input is one of the first ways to persuade them to support the budget by having them be part. So it's, you know, it's kind of Machiavellian, but more, it's practical because we obviously want to listen to what people want, you know, in addition. Thank you. We'll have to think of some ways. Maybe we'll have some people in the community who could give us some ideas. Toby, you could be one, too, that could help us.
Chris?
Don?
Do we use Front Porch Forum? I'm amazed how many people in Swanton are on Front Porch Forum.
I do not.
I don't either.
Not currently.
I have it. I just don't often look at it. But that's an idea to use something like that.
Don, you're muted.
It seems like every week, one, two, three or more people are joining Front Porch Forum.
We can certainly look at that. Any way we can get information out and get information from the poll is always positive.
There's a different one for Highgate and Franklin. I think Richard has one, Ennisberg has one, we have one. So and they're shared amongst the groups.
That would be wonderful. I mean, nothing makes a business manager happier than to have tons of input early on and and and, you know, kind of a strategic plan going into development. So I'll just note, honestly, there's not a lot of other changes to this. Supply and equipment lines, we talked with elementary principals about trying to level fund those. fund those as much as possible, just trying to create a baseline of spending, which we know over the last couple of years just hasn't been achievable. I have department budget sheets out to MVU. Thank you to the assistance of those administrators with that. I'm currently working with facility directors, the Facility Task Force. We talked about this last night, but we're working with facility directors on that, on the facility planning as far as budgeting and long term planning as well. That that will be included in your next draft as far as proposals. And we're also working with MVU on their athletic and technology team budget in all the schools. So more to come. The overall increase in this draft is actually down from the last draft, and that's primarily due to the decreasing contracted service costs. So we're right now projecting an increase of 1.17%. That's down from 1.82, I believe.
And we do want to talk through some of the positions and shifts or proposals or options in executive session, because we'd be talking about contracts and brainstorming with the board about priorities there. So that would be an executive session conversation.
So at this point, I think the remainder of our budget discussion will be in executive session, unless there's any other questions or comments. Seeing none, uh, see, at this point, we can move on to other business. And first up for other business is a Facility Task Force update. Not a whole lot to update. The the white building roof project is moving forward. The contract's been signed. Scott's working with the contractor on what weekend, the weather, and, you know, all the stars will align that they can do it. We had a meeting last night to discuss, to start the process to review the companies that submitted for RFQs for performance contracting. We're moving that process forward. Three companies submitted pretty big binders that we have to review. And then we're going to have interviews, I believe, first week or second week of December. Not a whole lot else as far as updates for anything new, kind of business as usual, you know, keep looking at HVAC, looking at performance contracting a lot, you know. Fortunately, nothing major popped up. We actually went a couple of weeks without that. So unless Peter and Don have something to add, that's about all I have.
Peter, anything to add? Chris, because the only issue, and I think the meeting last night was really good. And I think we're moving in a nice process. But how do we let the public know that we're thinking about this? I mean, we just talked a little bit about budget and, you know, we're always trying to get the word out so we don't react on the night before town meeting at some public meeting. But I don't know if there are people in our community that understand it, that maybe might give us some thoughts or feedback. But I don't have a solution. But I just, I'm just concerned that we get down the road and feel we're doing something really good. And then whammo, people say, we didn't know about this, and we just had a bond. So just a question, I guess, maybe it's no answer.
I think it's important, we talked about it, right now, we're in our exploratory phase still, but it's going to be very important to come up with a really solid communication plan. And in this time of, you know, virtual meetings, a lot of times doing, you know, solid PowerPoints with a video that we can get out to people that explain what it is and what it isn't, and what we're looking at, and when they can tune into the next board meeting, when it's going to be on the agenda, like those kinds of things. So we can really be as explicit as we can in communicating out to people.
And Laura, thanks for all your work and scheduling. But this mean we're going to miss a meeting in December by taking the meeting night for the interviews and then going to the 15th?
Take a meeting night. Hopefully, we will have a recommendation to bring after we interview on the eighth, we have a recommendation to bring to the full board on the 15th. Is that what you mean?
Well, isn't our regular board meeting on the eighth?
No, our first one's the first.
Okay, the first. Okay, so we're all right. Okay, 15th. So I was looking at it. All right. So that does work well, then. Thank you. We should be able to make a meeting the way the schedule is. I think we talked about that last night. We need to be able to make a meet, make a decision on the eighth or very soon after, right, Chris?
Yes.
Okay.
I did send a Google invite for the eighth, Don. I did put that in the chat.
No, I got it. No, I got it. And I looked at it. And I was thinking about it. Thanks. But okay, great.
Okay, that's it from facilities. Next up would be board goals group.
I'll go ahead and start if that's okay with everyone. And I'd like to touch on a couple of things, the district goals and the board goals. And let's start with the district goals. We had a great meeting, I think, the task force and Julie. And we talked about some of the district goals that we have in terms of like, you know, improving student achievement, etc. And it's almost, it's like you are already anticipating any requests that the board might have, as we saw tonight with the meeting, and letting us know that you're coming up with the ways to measure this, to give us an idea of it, everything. I think, speaking for the committee, I think we'd all are pretty excited about the way that's going to, is, what's the word, the way that's blowing, or that's the way that's coming about. And then, and I'll let others speak to that in a minute. But the other thing is, is the board goals. And one of those was to have the supervisory review process, the assessment process put together. And we brought that up at a different board meeting. And I just don't know if we need to get approval for it, or if we had it when everybody said if we could just make those certain changes, it'd be okay. Because I don't, we're so busy with everything else. I don't want it to fall through the way, you know, to the wayside in terms of trying to give Julie some feedback from us. Because we all know feedback, we're the ones asking for it, too. We want to be able to give it to Julie. So I don't know what the procedure would be if we have to vote on it, or if we're cool, just that we all agree that we're going to use that system. That was a question.
I'm not
I'm tired and all.
Sorry, it was a long question.
You approved the job description, but you just talked about the evaluation tool, right?
Right, right. Do we need to approve it? It's a pretty, I mean, it's kind of a, it's a system. So I guess we probably do, huh? Maybe we're not there yet. And, you know, but I would like us to be there by the next meeting so that we can start the process. So do people want to go back? It's online. It's on in our files. If you want to go back and just check it. If you have anything you don't like, let me know. And then maybe we can put it on for a vote next time on the next agenda, if that makes sense.
Yep. We would have to, we'd have to pre-warn it. We wouldn't be able to do it tonight anyway. And then we can definitely put it on the agenda for the next meeting, though.
Okay, great. And then the last thing that I want to mention is, I'm so glad that this came up tonight. And Toby, thank you, in terms of the proactive part about not just influencing when we have the budget, but getting people's input while we're creating the budget. So I think our, our task force is going to meet here real soon to talk about some ideas for that. So I know it's one, I don't, I forget what color it is. I think it's green or something, and no one, no one, you know, has, has spoken up for it yet. Okay, so Joanne, Megan, Devin, anything to add?
I guess I'll just go back to the, the reports we saw previously from KOSHA. I think, you know, that is spot on in terms of what we're looking for, for more internal metrics. We know there's the once a year statewide reporting we're going to get, you know, which is well and good, but we don't necessarily want to be evaluating ourselves on one single test. So to have something where the evaluations are happening periodically throughout the year, and then we can compare those with, with how we do on the statewide tests will be really super valuable. So I'm, I'm thrilled to see that.
And I'll just touch real quick. As far, I want to say, Terry, I believe it was turquoise, which I think is part of the group that I'm in for. It wasn't just student involvement, because that's something that Devin and I had worked on a little while ago. But it was also community involvement also. So I am also looking forward to us meeting and, you know, thinking of ways that we can involve the community or invite the community, or I'd love to have coffee, you know, with members. I don't get out much. So whoever we feel is important, that we should invite, I would love to get to know them.
I don't think any of us get out much these days.
You know, coffee over Zoom. It's okay. I will have my cup of coffee over Zoom. So, um, yeah, I would definitely be looking forward to that.
Great. And Megan, did you have anything you wanted to add? Thank you, Joanne. Megan? She's either taking a while with the, or it's bedtime for the kids, and she got distracted. So anyway, okay. So Julie, did you want to add anything?
No, just that it was a really good meeting. It's a good opportunity for me to hear from the board members who have an interest in these topics of, you know, what, what it is that they feel like they're missing? Because our administrators work very hard. They all talked about how our teachers work really hard. I just want to give the shout out to our administrators, who are working incredibly hard to keep kids learning, keep their, their achievement moving forward in this crazy logistical, somebody said it earlier, there is no muscle memory for anything that you do. They're reinventing things every day. And so when you tell me what information that you need to be informed and well informed, then I, then I have a better way to talk with the principals and, and the curriculum director and student services, all the administrators and say, here's what people need to hear about. Here's where we can do more, we can be more transparent about our process. Because it is the work of our teachers, our coaches, our principals, to set these goals, to do this analysis. But people don't understand what goes into it. And so I thought it was a great, and it is a terrific tool. I just, I think it's absolutely wonderful tool for our teachers to be able to analyze data.
But I gotta tell you, Julie, you're spoiling us. We had that meeting, and then here we are with some magnificent, like, response time of, you know, a day. So thank you.
It was last week. So, you know, we're fine.
So I, I know what we saw was, you know, K through eight. I guess I'm, I'm, I know this is an elementary meeting. I'm curious to know and see kind of what the, what the high school will have available in terms of data, because I know that's something the goal group is going to be looking for.
Absolutely. We'll be looking forward to that.
All right.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we can move on to our last item under other business, which is COVID updates.
So I just figure I have to have that on there all the time, because there's something every, every day. So on the, first of all, we had COVID testing of all staff who wanted it in all of our schools. We found out about it. I'm looking at you, Dina. Was it last Wednesday that we found out something in that range that everybody's going to do this? And then by Friday, we had a date. And we worked all weekend, Jen Ganyang, Dan Palm, I mean, there were just folks that were really, the nurses had to get trained, the principals had links to get trained. We had to send all this information out. We had to make sure teachers had information. There's a little video on how to register for the testing. It was just fast. And everybody was tremendous. And nobody knew anything, right? We had no idea how something as simple as the labels would come. Would there be a giant school of labels with all our teachers alphabetically on it? Or would it come by school? So we, those are things we had no idea. And you can imagine, logistically, that would make a big difference. So we were solving all those problems. And this morning, the National Guard dropped off the test kits. It wasn't at the right place, but we weren't going to tell the National Guard they were wrong. And we just threw them in my car. We didn't throw them. We carefully moved them and went to MVU. And Dan was there with a dolly. And we made sure everything was sorted. It was easy. We separated and we brought things to the different schools. The nurses were all set. Staff was ready. People came in, got their COVID test. It was just the simple nose swab, not the more intensive one. And then they all went back to MVU and they were brought to an overnight shipping company and were shipped overnight to, there were special labels that had to go on them and so forth. So it was a big production in a really short period of time. And it's happening all over the state this week. And our teachers were great. So many were willing to be tested. We will, individuals will know the results of their test in a few days. They're all gone off to a place in Massachusetts. So we shall see what we shall see. And I just can't thank the nurses, the administrators, everybody enough, because it was this big sort of anxiety laden task that turned out to be pretty darn smooth. So it was good. It was very good. The other thing that I wanted to make sure we talked about is when people talk about going remote. So the governor had toyed with the idea, Secretary of Ed had toyed with the idea of maybe having schools go remote preventatively because of this big holiday break between Thanksgiving and people gathering and so forth. Well, the decision was, and I completely agree with the decision, you know, we are not doing that. The state is not doing that. The school district is not doing that. In fact, the governor has been very strong in coming out and saying, avoid all travel. Do not have gatherings between community members and mixing households. Those things are in aid of stopping the spread of this virus, but also in support of keeping schools open. The very last thing we want to do is to keep, is to close schools. The reason why we would have to go remote might be if an individual teacher or students in the classroom have a case and need to quarantine, that classroom might need to go remote for a couple of weeks. Or, you know, we don't want this to be true, but the, the spread could increase so that the state does say reactively, boy, you know, we're at a big percentage of, in the community, and so we are going to have to reactively close or go remote. I don't see that happening. I really don't. I think that we have a pretty good handle on things, that if people follow the expectations and are careful and are masked and, you know, are responsible, then that isn't going to happen. I also, the other reason why we might have to either go remote would be if we didn't have enough staff. And that goes hand in hand with the cases. So, you know, before people were worried about, what if half our teachers go to Connecticut or something for Thanksgiving? And as Dina mentioned, people are missing their family. People want to travel. And yet, if, if so many people did, we wouldn't be able to run school because we need the staff to be here. So we don't expect that to happen. Any teacher, any staff member that is, has to go away for one reason or another, you know, is notifying their principal or notifying human resources. And we're working with that. And right now, it's a very tiny amount. So I'm not expecting that to be the situation. You know, it could be in the future. We've been very lucky. We haven't had any cases in our school. We, we could. And those kinds of things can impact the availability of staff. There's no magic number. I was meeting with superintendents today, and we were trying to come up with some sort of magic percentage. If more than 25% of staff are not here, you know, would that be a number we would use to say, boy, we have to go remote? It depends on who it is, right? Every class, every position, Dina described her interventionists are subbing for classroom teachers, you know, You know, at M V U, I I, John Lumsden is always teaching French or something, you know, I mean, we're everybody is all hands on deck doing different things. So it really, there's no magic number. It's really about the principal knows that he or she have enough people to run school that day. Um, and we will uh, be talking about that tomorrow as an admin team, but at this point, I don't want families to hear the grapevine is something else, right, in education and in our communities. There is no plan to go remote. But we have to be planful. So that if I get a phone call that says I'm positive and I need to quarantine for two weeks and I'm a classroom teacher. Well, I've got to have some kind of framework in my mind of what the next two weeks of plans are going to be. And make, so tho- those, that kind of preparation, um, everyone has put so much work in. Um, other school districts, I hear, they haven't even started planning for those kinds of eventualities. And our team has been working hard on it, and it's very stressful. But um, I think it will alleviate stress later if somebody has a situation where they do have to uh, work remotely for two weeks and quarantine. So I just wanted to reassure people that we are not planning to close or go remote, but we know that there are a variety of eventualities that could happen and we have to plan in case of that. Um, I think that's about it. Peter, you had a question?
Yeah, um, more of a statement, maybe. It it kind of encompasses COVID, uh, communications, um, town meeting, the budget, everything. So.
Big question.
Um, yeah, well, um, thinking about town meeting coming up, um. So the legislature has given select boards the option of going Australian ballot i- if you're a town that votes from the floor. So the town of Franklin is very seriously um, thinking about that um, for multiple reasons, but um, for one thing, we don't know the school situation. It, um, I I told the board that I I don't think the school's going to be an option for voting or town meeting this coming year. And maybe we should come out with a statement or something to let, you know, the towns know that. And so thinking, thinking of that, so that that's, that's one thing, are the schools going to be available? Um, and you know, obviously understand that they they very well may not be for uh, for voting. Um, another thing that I'm um hearing is that the legislature is going to take up in the session early on whether um, they are going to mail out all of the um, ballots for uh, including the school district for the budgets. Meaning that just like during the election, everyone was mailed a ballot. So eh, we saw the turnout for the election. We could see a major increase in um, voting for our budgets. Um, how that affects our budgets, um, only time will tell, but that certainly leads to, we need to do the best we can communicating the budget um this year, um, maybe even more so than than years past. So I just wanted to to throw that out there and uh, you know, kind of where we're heading.
Well, I am looking um, there it is, school elections. We have guidance that came out this fall for um, school, schools and elections. So I will send that to you, Peter. Um.
Okay.
What I do know is that they change guidance all the time. So what the guidance looks like for fall elections may, you know, may look different depending on conditions in March. So right now, we probably couldn't have a school gymnasium full of community members and comply with what the governor's executive orders are. Um, so I will send that to you and uh, to the other town managers, just so they can see um, what the current guidance is. I'm sure um, town managers probably get guidance too, but you know, I, I'll just send that out to see what that looks like.
And and the thing is, we can't wait till what it's going to be like in in March, right? We have to plan now for how we're going to do it, so.
Welcome, welcome.
Yeah.
To the world that we're in. It's, uh, you're exactly right. You're exactly right. It is difficult to plan. Um, and then things change. So I'll, I'll let you, I'll make sure I share that link with you as soon as I find it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, the next thing up, our next meeting is uh, December first, which will also be held virtually. Um, unless anybody else has something to add, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to enter executive session uh, for confidential employee contract discussions. And I would say we'd invite in Julie and Laura.
Yes, that's who we need.
So.
Before you do that, I don't know procedure-wise, but Toby put in the chat box that he has a question.
All right, go for it, Toby. You're muted.
I'm muted, telling him he's muted. Toby, you're muted.
Can you hear me? There we go.
Yes.
Okay, it kind of ties in with what Peter was just saying too. And I don't think it's too late for you all to maybe uh, let the public know. I I'm curious whose whose terms are up. And uh, if someone wanted to uh, run, uh, does anyone know what the requirements are going to be as far as obtaining sign- signatures? Because that's going to require some knocking on doors or something. So I'll just listen. That's my only question and I'll, that's it. I'm done.
That's a good question, Toby. I hadn't thought about that for gaining signatures.
Uh, so, so so part of um, the legislature giving us the ability to to um go from an on-the-floor vote to Australian ballot, they also put in there that signatures would not be required for anyone that wants to run for any town or school position that's elected. So all they have to do is, is they have to sign that, fill out that document that says the position that you want to run for. But the, you don't have to get signature.
Well, that's good to hear. Who who is up? Because we should be thinking about that too, shouldn't we?
Devin's up for Franklin. I believe Jen is up for Highgate. I don't know who's up for Swanton. Megan, Megan's up for Swanton. So it'd be Devin, Megan and Jen for each town.
Do we know how long their terms are?
They're all three-year terms now.
Oh, everybody, everybody's on a three-year term.
Yeah, ways broke down. Originally, when we first formed, we had the three-year, two-year, one-year, so we could get everybody on a different schedule. But once that went through, every single term is the three-year term.
Gotcha. Okay.
And that way it breaks down is there'll be one position from each town every year.
Okay, thank you much.
Thank you, Toby. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session and invite in Julie and Laura. Terry's the first. Uh, Jen's the second. Uh, all those in favor of going to executive session, raise your hand. Terry, I didn't see you vote. Oh, so motion carries nine zero. Thank you very much, everyone.